Good evening. This is Monday, September 24th, 2012. This is Athens City Council Committee Meeting tonight. Tonight we have three committees who are going to be meeting: Planning and Development; Finance and Personnel; City and Safety Services. Each of these committees has a pretty full agenda, so we might have a reasonably busy evening. First thing is I've been asked by Scott Thompson from our technical booth to remind people that we now have new -- free public Wi-Fi for broadcasts from City Council and the mayor's conference room. If you are interested in working with this -- acquiring this public Wi-Fi possibility, you need to sign up for it, and right here in the technical booth is where you need to do it before or after a meeting. So please sign up if you're interested. Our Planning and Development Committee is going to begin -- is going to follow a conversation that was begun last week at City Council regarding the possibility of a wastewater facility to be built in conjunction with the county and the city in the Radford Road area. This is a Planning and Development Committee, so we're going to turn it over to Christine Fall, President.
Thank you.
Not President.
I appreciate that Larry and Lenny are here again this evening, and I appreciate that you -- we did formulate questions, the council formulated questions, to address this issue, and that you provided us a copy of your answers to this -- to these questions. I wish that they had come sooner than right before the meeting tonight because just the quick reading of my questions that our answer here is, "I still have a lot of concerns and questions about this project," and I think that because presently I see that this has a lot of maybe upsides for the county, it has a lot of potential downsides for the city, and we need to be able to look at this before, you know, City Council or the Planning Commission goes forward with even negotiating a memorandum of understanding or a contract. One of my biggest concerns about this is that we are opening up a area, you know, we're opening a city service into the county that has no real controls on development. They -- right now, the major control on development is septic, and the availability of your property to provide septic systems for the development. Now whether that is a single-family home, a subdivision, you know, commercial or anything. And when you start providing sewer for these positions, for these properties, that releases that pressure on that -- it releases that pressure on development. Potentially, you can have a huge amount of development. And right now, the county doesn't have any development controls such as zoning or anything else. So what we're looking at is the potential to, you know, hook up unless the city looks at really specific controls in this project. We are looking at potentially opening it up into, you know, sprawl development. And this could be on the development, on the business side, or on the residential side. I think that --
Can I have one of those for you?
Well, let me -- I think that this is a major issue because then if you have unlimited development, how do you, you know, contract for unlimited amount of sewer and those sort of things coming into the system?
First of all, if you drive that area, there is no way it's going to be unlimited growth. You already have existing businesses, you have existing subdivisions, and a lot of the territory is just the geography of it, it's either a hillside or a low area that you can't build out there where it's going to be a large box store if that's what you're worried about or something like that. So I think if you just look at the area, it is basically developed now. This is a project improved to safety. The county health department can tell you that the systems out there have been failing for years, and there's some areas out there we can encourage small business growth. And that's one of the reasons that at least I'm for, looking into it.
And I agree, but however, why is it not being -- why is it not developed right now? The majority of the reason is because you can't install sewer, you can't install septic systems. If you release that pressure, then there's a whole other issue of higher density development that can go on in the area. And also with businesses, I think that we have to look closely at what, you know, are we setting the city up for development of businesses in an area that all of a sudden, businesses from Athens can go out there and not be constrained by the income tax of Athens, and they just, you know, flee the city because of sewer.
From our Chamber of Commerce days, the reason that businesses locate in Athens is because of the student population and the population of Athens. That's not going to move outside of the city. Now potentially, you may be set a few small businesses, could possibly.
But that's --
But most of your businesses are restaurants and retail stores, and they go where there is a volume of people, and the volume of people are inside the city.
Yeah, but we're trying to develop businesses within Athens such as the, you know, CGI, which --
Which is a county and joint city-county effort.
Yes.
It shows that we can work together.
The thing is, is we may be setting ourselves up for having businesses go out where we're losing tax base. You know, I think that these sort of issues -- and I look at your answers to your questions, and I still have a lot of issues. And I have a lot of issues with density and those sort of things. And what it says to me, I've been in a lot of situations like this, where sewer gets developed in areas where there is no zoning and there's no real kind of development regulations, and it's kind of a free-for-all. And you say, "Well, right now, there's no, you know, there's certain types of geologic controls on it." But I would argue that a lot of those is because of septic systems. People want to go out and all of a sudden they can hook into a septic, into a sewer system, then that releases that pressure, and, you know, the idea of annexation is not necessarily a goer because, you know, that's not going to bring in enough money for Athens to provide services. And I just, I think that these sort of issues have to be looked up upfront and recognized because I think that Athens, the city of Athens, has a lot to lose in these sort of, you know, growth, development issues.
Oh, so I have a lot to gain, too. You mentioned CGI. Hopefully, there'll be local people here, but part of the reason they are looking at moving here and want to come here is because they're looking at graduates from the University and Hocking College. Can the city provide housing for all those people? That's what the area outside of the city can also help do. And they'll still be paying city income tax. I pay city income tax. I don't have a vote, but I pay it because I work in the city. So you're not going to lose all your city income. You actually may be increasing because if we bring more businesses like that in here or existing businesses expand more, they have to live somewhere, and not everybody can afford to live in the city, and not everybody wants to live in the city. A lot of people live just outside or even farther out in the county. So what we're trying to do is to provide a quality of life for people to be able to live where they can have the basic need of seeping systems and seeping systems.
Right. And that brings me to the build-out scenario that is provided. I think I would like to see the build-out scenario updated with the idea that now we're going to have more pressure because of fracking, injection wells, and those sort of things, and the potential increases in, you know, housing that is temporary, those sort of things. The build-out scenario was not very well articulated in what I saw, and so, you know, we need to have some kind of idea of what peak build-out is for the area, and how do you estimate that, what sort of build-out is going to be there. You know, I just, what I get from this is that this is a very preliminary discussion of this process, and that I still have a tremendous number of questions about build-out, about zoning, about, you know, annexation possibly of the building, of the business areas, that need to be addressed. And what I see in the questions here, how you answered it, is that, you know, they're going to be addressed in the city, the county-city agreement. And it needs to be aired before the city-county agreement even starts to be negotiated. So, I mean, that's my 15 cents worth. I'd like to open it up to other members of --
Before you open up, I'd like to address a couple of things you said. The build-out's been defined by your planning, it's already been defined by your own people. We have so many homes out there now. What we expect the growth is, is a maximum of 400 homes over the next 15 years. So I don't know why you're coming up with this idea that there's not a lot of build-out that's been planned or dictated. That's already been discussed. That's already there. As far as negotiating in the agreement, that's clearly the best way to control it. You have no way to control anything else except by going into this agreement, defining these things upfront. Sitting here having a philosophical discussion is not going to advance either part of this cause. The third thing is, is that we don't need to come to the city. Okay? We can build that sewer system, we can build our own collection plant, take it to our current, or build, take it to our current collection plant. Those are both more costly options. But the thing you're not looking at is the fact you have a customer willing to give you $4 million for capacity fees to deal with your own problems you have in the city right now. That's a huge amount of money to deal with infrastructure you're currently having trouble with. To not look at that and say, "This would help the city and is a win for the city," is very misguided. Because I don't see how that could not be the win when you can take that money and leverage that to take care of your own existing problems, which your own department has already said exists. Those aren't things we're making up or trying to sell for different reasons. Those are things that are out there, they're real. It's a win-win for both parties to enter into this agreement. If you don't want to enter into this agreement, then we'll look at our other alternatives. For us, this is the cheapest alternative we have.
I'm not saying that we don't want to enter into the agreement. I think that as the city and kind of as the protector of city services, the council needs to have a fuller picture of what needs to go on. I'm just concerned that, you know, what is in the build-out scenario may not necessarily be the reality on the ground today, given a lot of the new development that could go on because of, you know --
What can't you control in an agreement that would happen?
Well, you could have, you know --
You can't control leasing, oil and gas leasing and --
Quite a bit, there were quite a few acres that were leased prior to the last leasing that went on.
But does that have to do with sewer collection?
Well, I think it also has to do with some of the other industrial aspects that go along with that, and how that may impact a sewer system.
How can somebody dump sewer in if you're not allowing an industrial connection without fire?
Well, is that something that you're asking? I mean, you're only asking for business, how do you define business, and residential?
Again, those are things that you sit down and discuss and negotiate. You know, it's not a problem to negotiate how many connections they're going to have, what type of connections you're going to have. Right now, we're talking about existing customers building a collection system for the existing customers.
But once you've established an existing structure, then there's all those places that future development can tie into, and that's what I'm talking about.
Not unless you have a new capacity fee and a new tap. I mean, you can control how many people can come in.
Yes, and I want to make sure that the city recognizes that. And, you know, I'm concerned that this is an open-ended, I have seen too many times where sewer systems went out into undeveloped land, and all of a sudden, it's like mushrooms. And so, you know, once bitten, twice shy. And so I'm bringing up things that I have seen before, and I think that it behooves, you know, City Council to be very cautious about this because we're talking about a very expensive system. Now, I recognize the environmental concerns that are out there, and maybe we want to just build it for the people who are out there, but five years from now, or 10 years from now, when there's, you know, development that wants to go on, there's going to be pressure to go and plug into the system. And we have to recognize that. And to say that, to kind of push it off into the future and say, "Well, that's not what we're talking about," is not a forward-thinking sort of --
Well, this agreement doesn't push it off. This agreement outlines a strategy for growth. This is what you would do. You'd do it in a 10- or 20-year increment, whatever you want to do, and say, "This is when you'll reevaluate it." The problem is, we have to look at how we're going to treat our sewage. And we're going to have to say, you know, "We want a fixed cost or some reasonable expectation of cost over the next 20 years. You want a reasonable expectation of what's going to come into the system." Those are very compatible. It's not like we're at loggerheads as to what can be developed here. It's a matter of asking the questions and answering the questions and writing them into the agreement.
I'm still concerned about the type and density of development. I'd like to see --
Okay, Chris, again, you're talking about somewhere else. If you drive that road, all three roads, 50, Radford Road, and West Union where it goes out of town and becomes Route 56, it's already developed. Now, down the road, if there's ever an extension towards Hibbertsville, which there could be manufacturing and things like that, if it would ever get out to the university's land where there's been talk for probably around 15 years of another industrial park, that's something that can be built into the plan now, but that's only if there is a second extension down the road. What you're talking about now is already developed. You know, you're using an argument about something that's not fact. Just drive out there and look at it.
Oh, I can drive into other neighborhoods that are a lot denser development because they have sewer. The idea that, you know, it's developed and there's people living out there doesn't negate the concern about increasing in density, because that happens when you --
But actually, you already have the control because it's within a three-mile limit, and you have control over the subdivision that takes place. So that's already in your purview. So what you're not, what you're, it's already there, you can control.
But our major reason why we do limits on the three-mile is through septic design. Having sat on, you know, numerous planning boards, you always talk about, "Well, you can't subdivide your land because you don't have enough septic areas." And so how would this, you know, that's my concern, is that you remove that pressure, that pressure valve, and then all of a sudden, it gets released.
You still have to approve the land split if somebody's going to split and add a new connection. So that's already there. That's not a, that's not a real issue anymore.
Oh, I think I still think --
Deceptics is not a problem there because you still have the control over land splits.
How would we control it? Oh, we don't want you to split your land?
You don't approve the split.
That's putting a lot of pressure on the city.
The other thing is to allow the number of connections that we operate for the next 10 years. You can have so many new connections a year in the agreement. That takes care of it real easy. There's no pressure on the city then.
And I appreciate the upfront, your answers to the questions are not as specific as what you're saying now. I think that these are issues that we need to hammer out before any sort of, sort of county-city agreement is had.
The key is, are we going to get to a city-county agreement, or are we just going to hammer out issues? The idea of authorizing somebody, a small group, the mayor and the safety service director to hammer out the agreement is to give them the ability to hammer out the agreement. We can sit here and discuss all these issues over the next three months or four months, come up to them, but if we're not going to say, "We're going to try to enter into an agreement," and if the council does not make an intention known by resolution that says, "We intend to try to do this," it's a fruitless effort.
But we also have to let our issues be known to the people who are negotiating this agreement.
That's very acceptable. I don't think anybody would say that doesn't happen.
That's right, and that's what, one of the reasons why we're having this meeting. So, Chris?
Just clarification question on the proposed expansion. So it is all within the three-mile subdivision, three-mile city limit?
I haven't drawn the lines that, you know, we know that very --
I think everything is.
Much of it is. I think it all is.
Yeah, because when you take from the edge of each section and go bisected, if anything, there may be a sliver.
And will there be development? There absolutely will be development. Would this allow some vacant lots that are in subdivisions that aren't able to build because of the septic requirements? That's true. But I think we did provide the data that helped form that. That can be looked at again in terms of the different areas and what our anticipated growth potential would be. And we absolutely have the right to control what is discharged through our system from, that's coming from the OEPA. I can have more detailed information to you on that, so. Jeff?
How many members would there be on this committee?
I assume it must have administration, private planner, service safety director. We could probably put somebody else from council if you need that input.
The administration can do whatever they want. You and the city can do, form your committee however you want.
Yeah. What you guys had envisioned? Obviously --
Oh, you're talking about a standing commission committee after it's been formalized.
No, step one.
Just step one.
Step one, we asked for the administration to do it because it's a whole lot easier to sit down and have one of us negotiate with the city on behalf of the commissioners as opposed to having a public meeting every time we want to meet and talk about this. So the idea was that you could sit down, you could have a discussion and exchange and work these things out, and then once they're fairly fleshed out as to what's going to happen, then it comes before the public body and the rest of the input takes place.
But I think that the issues that I've heard from council and others in the community is that the input from, you know, these pesky, you know, elected bodies need to be put into the mix before you start negotiating because otherwise you guys can negotiate until your hearts bleed, and then you come forward and it's just, the questions are answered. So I mean, I don't think that we're, like, asking too much here of what, there are legitimate issues that we have.
And I think that, you know, you should explain that to the administration and all the issues and come to some sense of what you want before you direct them to negotiate. You know, that's one of the things that solves your issues and takes care of that situation.
Yeah, but it helps to have information from the other, from you, who is the other side of the negotiating body, to answer these questions. You know, I don't think that that's --
I think we've been pretty clear. We told you how many homes are out there, we told you what our intent is, we told you what the future prospects for growth are. The rest is up to you. You know, you have a choice. We told you what we're willing to pay. We, you know, we have the ability to have some discussion about our ongoing use. That's something we can have some negotiation about. But basically, from our end, we've been pretty transparent, pretty clear as to what we want. The rest is really up to you. And if you don't want to, you know, come forth and have that discussion with us, then that's okay, too.
Well, that's what we're doing now, is discussing. I mean, I think that we need to hammer some of the concerns out because we are ultimately responsible to the citizens of Athens to make sure that their, you know, infrastructure is protected from potential overextension, you know.
Again, all that can be written into your agreement as to what your concerns are. You know, if you have concerns about growth of the system, you write that in. We're willing to accept those. We're not going to hurt you about this.
Are you willing to accept, you know, if we said the only way that you can join in is if you do a special, you know, business district and zone this area as a special development zone? I mean, that's what I'm trying, how much controls are you willing to put on that area?
We'll have to have that discussion when we see what it is. You know, if you give us something, you know, just to throw something out of the air, I don't know. It depends what makes sense out there for us.
I know one of my questions was about the Zanesville model, and you answered that by saying, "Yeah, we've been interested in looking at details that look similar to the Zanesville model." Because it's recently, or it's been done in Zanesville, something to this effect.
We have a template that we can start with that we set up with Nelsonville, and we did the Nelsonville, there's, you know, already pre-existing with the village of book, taking the sanitary sewer into Nelsonville. You know, that's an agreement that we can start with, and you can go from there and modify and look at these other things.
So I share some of the concerns. I think it's clear to all of us what the benefits are to the people that live in that area and the businesses that exist there and future homes or businesses. The problem of this opening up unguided development with no oversight from the county, not much oversight from the county in terms of how this area's developed is the concern, and this could eventually be annexed into the city. And there was a single property owner that wanted us to open up our sewer line maybe two years ago, and we said no because they would not provide details as to how that land would be developed. And it's the same situation here in that none of us have any idea what the development will be aside from, we can, we can guess on residential development, but other types of businesses or planning, growth, planning for the growth or zoning in this area if it's, if this goes through.
We've already identified areas of planning through our plan that we've developed and redone through a long process in two years. So we have a document on record that shows you where we think what kind of development can occur in different parts of the county. You know, that's our guiding document, what we're looking at. As far as zoning goes, that would be a township decision if the township wants to do that. That's been a long process, it's been, had a large number of discussions. We feel that it shouldn't be, zoning is not the same in Ames Township as it is in Alexander Township as it is in Dover Township. Township trustees have the ability to zone and do it on a county-wide, or a township-wide basis as opposed to a county-wide basis. If you follow that discussion over the years in the county, it's unlikely that would pass because it's going to go in front of the voters, no matter what you put out there on a county-wide basis. More likely and more logically, a township basis, much more controlled, much more condensed, could get passed, but that's up to the Board of Township Trustees to do. We can't do it on a township basis. The Board of Township Trustees has to do that.
I guess that was, that was my only point right now, but I look forward to continued dialogue on where this can go.
In our internal discussions, we've talked about there may be some areas that indeed we want to consider about annexing it because of what the potential might be there. Again, you know, we haven't had that discussion yet with the county. That's just one item.
And I guess one other observation, more than likely, once this, you know, we can talk about limitations on use, but really, once this is built and in place, it'll be really hard to say no to anybody that wants to use it. Unless there's a really, I think unless there's a really egregious example of something that the community doesn't want, it would be really hard to put limitations, I think, even if we have an agreement. I just think that we would have to say yes because it's there and existing, I think.
Not for manufacturing or something large along that line. We absolutely would be able to, single-family households would be mandated or they couldn't build, is usually what occurs, which is what is occurring now.
And I don't know what the council's goal is, but our goal is to have growth in the county. I mean, our county does not want to stagnate and go the other way like the number of other rural counties.
I think we would agree.
We need to have jobs for people, and we need to have places for people to live. And so you have, infrastructure is one of the best ways to do that.
I think we would probably agree, but it's something that has to be done smartly and has to be thought out, and there have to be reasonable guidelines in place for when and where that happens and how it happens. And opening this up without having that in place seems a little bit backwards.
Well, now we just have the agreement with me in place.
But if you define, you know, you're going to have the ability to have 15 new residential connections over five years, two business connections, and industrial connection, that's all going to be driven by the capacity of your plant. So as your plant looks out, you're going to say, "We have so much capacity in our plant." You can't start adding connections if you don't have the capacity. And so right now, it's a matter of defined by your capacity, you know, by what we're bringing, and those are things that you work out and you can set up as goals. And they'll be strict goals because there are going to be limits. You know, we're going to say, "We agree to let you impose limits on what development takes place inside that sewage system as it's built today because you've got the connections and the taps, and we've got to limit as to how much capacity you have." You know, we don't have the capacity, we're buying it from you. So we're only buying so much capacity. Future capacity is clearly going to be defined by the intergovernmental agreement.
Thank you, everyone, for comments and information on this. Entertaining. I support the intent to enter into negotiations. I just want to state my point there. I don't feel that the county's trying to snow us. I feel that I have a good --
I feel that I have a good communication with the mayor's office and the city service safety director and feel that they will be open and honest with us in the negotiation process and/or if we have a member of council on that discussion. I fully feel that that's a positive direction to move. I think this is going to behoove and benefit both the county and the city. So that's where I'm standing at the moment. Thank you.
I realize this is for us to enter into a dialogue with the county commissioners. Whatever task force we put together can add, you know, council members or not. Again, we don't need a whole public hearing every time this occurs. Again, my, I'm back and forth to this. I'm concerned about the growth and where we go with it. That's on the negative side, how much control we have of it. On the other hand, if we look at the comprehensive plan, it talked about trying to expand in this general direction. You know as well as I, the paradigm of annexing large swaths of suburbia is not cost-effective. First of all, they'd have to be willing to do it. I understand the capacity and the strength issues that are there. We could write those into the agreement. We could actually have, I think, the presentation last week was talking about 398, 89 new households by 2030. I thought that was kind of low, but when I started looking at where we were, our population in 2000, I went to start backtracking on the census. The county population was 62,000 and changed in 2000, it's 64, seven. So we increased about 2,500 in 10 years. So if you look at that, that's maybe about 100 households total. We could put, we could actually put limits on growth. Again, capacity could be one aspect. Another aspect could be over the, over the expected 389. We add increasing amounts of cost to the additions. We would say we stop there. We would say we require annexation any further progress on that. There's a lot of factors in here. We could actually put a lot of the oversight into the regional planning commission, beef that up, or we could have a standalone, you know, committee on it as it works out. There's lots of ways of looking at this. Again, my concern is that we wouldn't be able to monitor it, but the fact is the taps have to be put in so we can monitor it on that level. And the county would be doing that most of the time because they want to make sure that they're doing it right, not, you know, neglecting their side of the bargain. I've seen some of the contracts that are out there, but I haven't seen all of them. I'm still looking and seeing at all the different templates and models that could go out there. They'd be maintaining the system. We would be monitoring our side of it. I think that if you look at the response there, they talk about having just several meters where it interferes with the city. I do have some concerns about the growth again. I look at sections, if I look at the map that was generated by the firm there, there are sections of cities that, you know, it goes in and out of. Stagecoach Road, for instance, part of it's in the sewer system, part of it's outside the sewer system. Topography is limiting, but we all know that people can build on the side of hillsides as well, and they've done it. But these can be put into place. You know, I don't know if all seven of you could actually put something together and wanted to go into that dialogue, but I think, I think we should consider letting my administration do it. I have concerns about some are more forward-leaning than others in terms of where they want the growth to go, but we can put the checks and balances in, I think. And you have concerns.
Right. And you know what? This is the first public hearing that we've had, really, of this issue, and I think that it's completely legitimate that council airs these concerns because otherwise they get negotiated, you know, in situations where all of a sudden a done deal is put forward and then you say, but we have concerns about this. Better front-loaded than end-loaded because otherwise it just creates a whole, you know, kind of gridlock at the end, you know. I think one of the other concerns I have is that the increase in the capacity for, you know, that area out there has to be balanced with what we need in the city. You know, we don't want to fill up our capacity with the area, out in that area and not have, all of a sudden, somebody wants to develop another CGI and say, oop, we don't have enough capacity because it's all coming in from, you know, the county. And so those are the sort of long-term issues that we need to think about. And it's not just, you know, it is dealing with an environmental issue, but it's also dealing with a long-term environmental issue when we look at it with sprawl and development and where we want development to happen. And I think it's a completely legitimate argument to talk about it, you know, and, you know, we would, I think that it would behoove the whole process to have some, you know, person from council to be on the committee or liaison to the whole thing. Otherwise, I think that, you know, surprises happen. Council doesn't like surprises.
Okay. Realize you're a planning development committee. You're also on the regional planning commission. You wear two hats right there. If, I was going to say any council member should be involved in it, I would say the most skeptical I'm hearing right now would be most appropriate.
Absolutely.
Again, I look and say, in terms of footprint, someplace like CGI is probably smaller per square yard in terms of sewage than.
It's just in the front of my mind.
Yes, I understand.
And there's other sort of, you know, a bottling plant, a, you know.
Bottling plants? I have the same concern. Somebody backyard pickling operation on Radford Road, all of a sudden we have, you know.
Waste recycling plant. I mean, there is a lot of potential out there. We are in kind of a new situation with a lot of what's going on industrial-wise that we need to be able to.
But they will have, you know, realize the county is going to have to develop a basic workforce that's going to be maintaining the system, messed with, or whatever way you want to do it. I mean, they're going to be maintaining the pipes, at least conceptually, that's the way I'm hearing it. I mean, we're not going to be out there with our road crews. Chris, just because we've got outside the city limits, you're not going out into the wild west. There is laws in the state of Ohio, and this man back there enforces those. The health director informed me today that there are laws in the state of Ohio prohibit people taking fracking waste, putting them in a sewage system.
Oh, I realize.
Somebody could come into Athens at 2:00 in the morning.
Oh, yes. I realize that.
And dump it down somebody's system if they really wanted to.
Yes. But there could be other industries.
You make it afraid that when you get on the county, we are just lawless, and that's not true.
Yes. I also want to say, and might have the wastewater treatment plant upgrades that we've been, you know, and this has all been in the conversation in terms of looking at that we have areas that still have potential for development and hopefully more of single-family homes and looking at that, this is the time. But we are coming really close on our wastewater treatment plant final design, so. Jeff?
Just a technical question. Assuming that all this was to come to pass, you're going to tie into our system somewhere on the south side. Does the south side at this moment have all the necessary capacity? I mean, how big a project in and of itself is that going to be to carry?
I think you got the PDF that was sent to you. Actually, there are three different sites that were actually discussed of being tied in. Each one had different capacities.
Sure.
I believe Jenna from Fromer, her name was, talked about that there was a constriction at the south side. But we're also talking about possibility of, I think, 56 as well as actually Derry Wayne. There's several places that could tie in. It depends on what we're trying, you know, where the design goes at this point. Realize they're going to need lift stations, they're going to be maintaining lift stations. And if you look at the schematics, they're actually going to have a forced main in the system as well.
I'm just, what I'm wondering is, are we going to be digging up half the south side to put in new lines and other infrastructure?
Well, actually, the hope is if we have money, we can do the I and I on the south side, which is so bad. So eventually, we will be digging up.
That's the idea to solve your problem on the south side.
And that is indeed Andy's idea for what he would use with that first infusion, so.
Andy's had a lot of discussion and thought and input into this whole connection process and where it could go and how it could go. And Andy is very cognizant of the issues on the south side, you know. Being a south side resident, having family with properties and another property there, you know, I know all the issues going on.
Yes, and Ward Two has septic systems still in existence inside the city.
Yes.
So these are the concerns we have to deal with as well. We're going to have to extend our system out there anyway, within the city limits.
How about the Wander Hills area, all that? That's going to have to be tied in, too.
Well, that's right.
That's part of the problem.
And they're already, they're buying our water, you know.
Yeah, I know.
One of the questions I had was how many water wells are out in that system there. But eventually, we'd have to find that out anyway along the way. And then we'd have to, because the billing would assume, the assumption is that billing would be a mirror of either our metering coming in or their water going out from Lea.
Right. Well, there has to be a record of all water wells out there if they're potable.
There is.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
There is.
I wonder who would keep those records?
O D N R. It's on their website, actually. We looked it up.
Also the county health department, I believe.
No, actually, they told me it's O D N R ultimately maintains those records. Do I have that right? Steve?
I wanted to thank both of you for coming in to discuss this, the lengthy discussion. I'm in agreement that there's going to have to be a lot lengthier discussion going on with negotiating, which I, too, support, much like Member Butler does, in terms of making sure that we are at least planning and looking at all options. My big concern, and Paula kind of touched on this briefly, is capacity, is plant capacity. And I know that we're going to renovate the plant, but I know that, you know, at different points during the year, we come really close to capacity. And with these new lines tying in, making sure that there are some safety valves to where we can sit there and talk about tie-ins and how far we're going to go with that system because I'd certainly hate to pay $14 million just to find out that the system is already being taxed so hard that it's going to have to be replaced again. The other concern that I have, which is something that I'm hoping will be negotiated as well is our sludge, getting rid of the residual, which is, that's going to up significantly as well with a tie-in like this in terms of getting away or doing away with the wet waste coming out of the plant. But again, that's something that gets negotiated and we figure out how to solve that problem as well.
And I think Andy, in certain conversations, and I don't know all the details of it, but we have asked him if the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant will bring this up to capacity. And we certainly have received a positive answer from him. So we're clear on the, what was it, 1,345 projected homes that it will clearly cover that. So what would be helpful, obviously, because of the questions you've raised tonight, is if we did several scenarios of, you know, another corporation or a business coming in, what might be some of those possible scenarios or projections so that we can assure we are at capacity? Or have enough capacity to be able to take on that expansion?
Or not bumping over capacity.
Or not going over, right. But I don't think we're.
Realize if you look at that zoning map, there's very little manufacturing in the city at this point. We have very small areas. We have lots of, some B3s, quite a few B3s, but that's not manufacturing. That's commercial. And again, most of it's retail. So the footprint of that is mostly is limited. One of the reasons why I am in favor of actually trying to do this extension is because if we want manufacturing and therefore the spillover of jobs coming to Athens, we have to look and say, where do we put those? I think that, was it Guilford's several years ago, put that, their industry on Route 50 there. I think the conversation I had with them a few years after is if they had to do it over again, because they had to build their own treatment plant, I believe, which was quite pricey. So it really puts a kibosh on trying to do expansions for each individual, you know, business person who wants to come in and say, I want to build something, but I don't have a place. You know, realize we have, Global Cooling moved outside the city. They're at the industrial park now because they were looking for a footprint. We have limitations. Again, during the comprehensive plan, we had the Davis Resource Group look at our city, and they said 64% of the city was environmentally hampered or something, or stressed, mostly.
The floodplain.
If it's not, yeah, floodplain or slip prone, one of your, take your choices. And most of it already been developed, they said. You know, realize that's it. We have massive areas that have been developed already, you know, whether it's the east, near east side or the far east side. So they say, let's do some more, let's do some more infill. And we had that conversation in terms of comprehensive plan, too. Let's increase density. And we've kind of backed off on that, mostly with the student housing side of it. But the fact is, there's only so many places we can put a footprint. You look at Mill Street, for instance, you know, the Sun Power, where they moved out of Sterling Technologies, and Athens Mold Machine. Excellent places. It's manufacturing. The trouble is, again, that's floodplain. As soon as we start saying, let's renovate it, all of a sudden, we're going to have a long conversation of, and realize, we've tightened up our floodplain legislation at this point, saying, you know, for every, you know, yard, cubic yard fill, you put it here, you have to take out there. So it becomes a stress to say, let's just fix, you know, drop something in there. It becomes a little bit more difficult. So these are the things, you know, the global picture I'm looking at is where do we go? Where do we grow? You know, and how do we do it without, you know, either stressing our system or impinging on other people? So I would, you know, again, this is, we could have lots of conversations with this. I would be looking for the nod to go ahead and start the negotiation. If you want to be involved in it, we can come back to you at any time that you want. We could put several, a member or two off council, as long as we're not going to have to get the sunshine laws in, so we can have a little bit more flexibility on that. I think, I say, if I was going to balance it, I'd say, you know, you're leaning a little bit away from it. I know Andy leans forward towards it. I am, I'm somewhere in the middle, but I recognize the fact that these things have to grow and these things have to change. So, you know, you, whatever decision you think has to be done on this, we can have more conversations. We have lots of conversations. It's not even 8:00 yet. We have a whole couple more hours here.
I think that it's a question of being skeptical. I think skepticism is a good starting point from where the responsibility of the city council is, you know. We don't necessarily want to be spending $14 million so we increase capacity for a system that's not going to, you know, pay into it. You know, I think that those sort of questions need to be, you know, we represent the, you know, kind of the purse strings of a certain segment of, I mean, we're the kind of representative of the taxpayers to some degree or the service users. And so I think that we need to have the input in whether that means one of the city council members sits on the committee, which I would suggest would be probably a good idea. And having a conversation go forward. I don't, I don't know if council's ready to say, we agree with all this and let's just negotiate and then sign it. I think that, I guess, I guess what I'd like to hear is that this county is willing to do, you know, address our concerns, you know. What I hear when we say zoning and it's everybody, well, the county will never do zoning. And so, you know, how do we deal with those density issues? If it's not zoning, I want to see the county come forward with some, you know, legitimate answers to those concerns. Density. What are the, how are they going to deal with it? What do they put forward? Shouldn't all be on us either, you know.
I understand. I have actually, and I have yet to get from Andy, is some templates of what other agreements are out there. I think we should look at the spectrum of what we see. I know about two years ago when this came up, I did find some agreements that probably varied somewhere in one of my files. Really, that's one thing to look at and say, okay, what are the other models out there and how are they working for other people? In terms of, you know, what kind of limits we want to put on it, we can define those. Again, they have to be kind of realistic. And if you're getting involved, really, it's going to be just more than just once a week conversations. It's going to be a little bit more nitty-gritty, I suspect, and technical than, you know, we have to spend the time at it. I have no, you know, again, I think they're looking for the nod to start moving ahead. Otherwise, they have to start thinking about, you know, the planes or build your own. Whatever you do.
I guess, I guess what my census is, is that people are not completely against this idea, is that the county recognizes our concerns as legitimate and of full value when we go into this and that we need to address these concerns so that the people of Athens are protected, you know, our services are protected, and that, you know, it's a win-win situation for everybody. And, you know, I've heard from several people that they feel that it's not a very win-win situation for the city of Athens. We need to go and, you know, as they used to say, get to yes and be able to, you know, address these concerns and.
Paul, I could say something. One, the way Albany's done it with their sewer system is the density is controlled by the connections. They're only allowing so much. And skepticism works both ways. Back in the mid-'90s, Athens came to the rural part of the county into Albany because the same thing, they were expanding their sewer system, or the plant, and they wanted to be able to fill the capacity to a certain size, because they're going to make this big expansion, instead of having most of that sit idle. And the same thing with Andy, he's going to do this expansion, okay, instead of just sitting there, they wanted to bring the fluent in from the outside. And there were a lot of skeptics in the county about that. So yes, it works both ways. My point was, that was a wasted opportunity. We could have had partnership between the city, the county, and Albany, and this whole area would have had sewage a long time ago, at a much lower cost, and you would have had your expansion, probably two by now. But that was, so it's not just the county's coming to the city, the city actually came to the county a number of years ago, and were asking the same thing. So that's what I'm saying, if we work together, we want it to be win-win. Because obviously, if it's something that you don't like, then you don't go that way. If it's something that we can't agree with, we won't go that way. So what we need to do is meet, hopefully, meet on a rational discussions and come to a mutual consensus of what can be done, for the betterment of the whole community.
I really would like leaving it on that note, too, the betterment of the entire community, not just Athens as a city, but also appreciating that we on council, some of us weren't involved in those conversations in 1990 or wherever, and I think tonight was a good way for us to get all these issues out on the table, talk about what some of the ideas have been in the past, let the public know that there have been conversations. You guys have been thinking about this for a couple of years now, as that study was being done, and that the city administration has been meeting and discussing some of these ideas with the improvements at our wastewater facility anyways. This was going on. So I don't know that the general public knows that. So this was a good way to get that moving. And I would like to see, I don't know if we can make that decision tonight, but the committee be appointed and we move forward. So I don't know how we go about doing that. I would suggest that, obviously, Chris has a lot of interest in this, but maybe someone at large as well be involved, if that was a possibility. And then, of course, our administration people. So that would be...
You know, obviously, it's what you decide, but I think it would be helpful for the process moving forward, is that you have between one and three council members on there, because there's no sense, like Chris said earlier, is we have all these negotiations, and then there's four people who say, hey, I don't like anything.
Right.
So if you can come up with representation of the committee of people who have different views of that...
There's the sunshine aspect that just makes, making meetings that much more difficult.
They're aware of that. I mean, their public officials do have to deal with that all the time.
Well, is it, how many, is it just council members that are sunshine, or we get all these elected, you know, more than...
Well, you would be your committee.
You know?
If you're going to use your planning committee members, you'd be the majority of the planning committee members, subject to the sunshine. So what's your planning committee official size? Is it everybody? Or is it...
Three.
Or we could do one from planning and one from finance and personnel.
Right. Then you're less than your quorum for the council, so you're safe.
One from service safety, service, that's another option.
The thing, like I said, it would be helpful to have broad-based discussion, so we know what everybody...
Let's have the at-large members to fight it out amongst themselves, who wants to be on the panel.
What I'll try doing is getting some...
There's no fighting over here.
Well, I think, I think that maybe we can do this by email, in the next couple days, based on...
What I'll try doing is getting some of those templates together in terms of how agreements are. I know I had one several years ago from Gallup Police and their township or one, or their county. Some of the other things you want, one of the other things to do, of course, is look and say, one of the checks and balances, we talked just about a few minutes ago, was the subdivision rates. You may want to review those and see where it starts. I mean, do we, when does the tripwire come? A small lot split, a major lot split, a subdivision, and we want to look at that.
Right. But the other, the other question was whether this needs to go in front of the planning commission, because it is having to do with...
I think I was determined it was not, necessarily.
Correct. The law director has waited and indicated that it is not, based on...
So in the next couple of days, we can email, see who's interested, and, you know, what's, where do you see your timeline for the...
Well, obviously, you have to wait till a regular council meeting to authorize that negotiation, so you'll have to go either on an emergency basis or do your three readings, whatever process you want to do.
Oh, no, we can, we can negotiate. I mean, the thing is, is before the, I mean, we can be in on the negotiations, I mean, but to finalize negotiations, that would be when it came before council, so...
Actually, well, actually authorization for us to enter, negotiate, negotiate, the administration to do that, that's really what's required, I believe. I think that's what you're looking for as a...
Is that what you were looking for?
Either the administration, yeah, if you give the administration authority, I, my suggestion would be give the administration authority to enter negotiations and name a subcommittee to include the administration, the safety service director, the public affairs director, and two council members. And that's your committee and your resolution, and that should solve all your concerns, and then they can move forward and start the discussions as we go.
And that would have to come up at the next council meeting.
Right. To come up at your meeting, and, you know, then we go from there and start beginning these more in-depth discussions and trying to hammer out the interim government agreement.
So, well, we can do that, and between now and then, we can decide who will be on, from council, who represents our council.
Sound like a plan.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I have no miscellaneous. Anybody have miscellaneous? No. Oh, Adam, are you here?
Yes.
We were, yours actually isn't on the, no, and I thought Paul Logue had gotten ahold of you. Oh, okay, sorry. Because we're still getting all the paperwork together and everything, so, but in the next cap, the next commission, the next committee meeting, you will be the first on the agenda. Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Don't forget your folder. Your folder?
Sorry. The only other thing I mentioned, and it doesn't fall under any particular committee, is I'm getting, I have an appointment for the alternate of the BZA, and I want to get approval of the next time. It's a, Thomas Rabb, he's a grad student, he's suggested, he's offered interest in being on an alternate on the zoning board of the feels. I'll get you the resumes, if you want, and...
He's associated with off-campus housing.
He was.
He was, he was doing the beautification. He's with the Vornavich Center. He's pretty much a very, pretty high-energy guy, so he lives on Lancaster, I think, North Lancaster.
I'm sorry, he is, but he's as a graduate assistant, a graduate student now, so he's done off-campus for a couple of years.
And as I say, I can get you the cover letter, his, of interest. I don't, I guess he talked to you or something? Okay, he was in one of the meetings and expressed an interest. So hopefully, next week, you can get that approved. I'll get you the information, though.
Mayor, could you be kind and remind us, how long would the appointment be for?
Three years.
And he's committed to that?
Sounds like he is, yes. We don't know. I mean, after all, Chief Mayor was interested in moving on, so...
Oh, he's not on it any longer?
No. He's gone the civil service board. He had more interest in that. Thank you. Civil Service Commission.
Okay. We'll move on to our finance and personnel committee. Just being followed, no, no, no.
The other Christine.
Chris Nysli is the chair of that committee.
There are just too many Christines around. Thank you, Mr. President. We have four items, five items for discussion tonight. The first one being domestic partner benefits. And I think each of you were given, each of the council members were provided a worksheet that the Human Resources Director designed and developed for us. And I will briefly walk through this. Just by way of refreshing everybody's memory, we had considered discussing domestic partner benefits earlier in the year, and one of the major considerations was how much it might cost. We've been supportive of it all along, but just wanted to know what the potential financial implications would be. So I think this worksheet answers many of our questions. And probably what's easiest is to look at the left-hand column to begin with, and it says that we have 161 city employees that are subscribers to the insurance system right now. Thirty-nine of those are enrolled as single employees, and so they potentially could enroll in the domestic partner program if this would be adopted. Then we have employees plus one, we have 40 enrolled there, and we have employees with children, we have nine at this point. So as Claudia reviewed this worksheet for us, if you look at the 39 single employees, and then those nine other employees plus children enrolled, she was saying potentially there could be 48 city employees that might choose to adopt this benefit. Now, what we did also then, and I think Councilmember Patterson also contacted Greg Fialko at Ohio University, as well as Claudia Reagan, and had some discussions with him to find out, as Ohio University adopted this domestic, a domestic partner benefits program, how many employees did enroll. Do you remember the number?
I believe it was 80 potential and 11 initially enrolled, some number somewhere around...
Out of 3,300 employees at the university, so a very small number. So while we looked at potentially the, potentially 48 people, if you look down, drop down to the very bottom column, I think what's most pertinent here is, is that Claudia's projection is, is that we might have 10 employees who might move from single to family coverage, with the additional premium cost of approximately $7,000 per year. So the other, part of the chart is interesting to look at. We are self-insured, and, you know, we pay $249,000 per year in premiums. So that's what this worksheet does. So, yes, President Sands.
Question. Claudia was talking earlier, because we're talking about domestic partnership coverage for same-sex couples and male and female couples who are not married.
That's correct.
And possibly their children.
Right.
Did we not, do we include some kind of affidavit that they've been together for a certain amount of time?
We took a look at the form, once again, using as a model that seems to work, is an affidavit form that was developed by Ohio University. And so we would have that where they do need to vouch, and they provide certain kinds of documentation to the city, and would sign that form. It's an affidavit of domestic partnership. And so there are several items that they have, share permanent residence, they're in a long-term committed relationship for at least six months, they're each other's sole domestic partner, they're responsible for each other's common welfare, they're at least 18 years of age or older, not legally married to anyone else, not related by blood closer than would bar marriage in the state of Ohio, mentally competent to consent to contract, and share financial obligations. And then they have a number of options that they can select. One, we have common or joint ownership of a residence, house, condominium, or mobile home, included with deed and title, or share at least two of the following: joint ownership of a motor vehicle, joint checking account, bank statement, or joint credit account, or a residential, excuse me, a residential lease identifying both partners as tenants. So the third option would be then, improving this, is that the domestic partner has been designated as a primary beneficiary on one of the following, either a group term life insurance, a will, or a trust. So that would be the mechanism. Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
How about they be enrolled? You, I mean, ordinarily, with married couples, as you're saying, when you marry, that person comes onto your insurance almost immediately. Would that be the same thing with a domestic partnership?
No, I think there's some existing, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well...
We have an open enrollment period annually.
Okay.
And actually, the, my understanding from this proposal is this would be effective before January 1, 2013, that we'd be offering this benefit. Claudia needs the months of, what do you think?
She needs...
By November, all the way through December, in order to get them, you know?
If council members are willing for us to continue, proceed with an ordinance, we would start with a first reading next week, so that she does have adequate time to announce to the city employees that this is now a benefit.
So it'd be a once-a-year enrollment?
Other than, I think personally, that you would treat it no differently than we do our health insurance now, so that if there is a qualifying life event, meaning perhaps the partner loses their job, where they had insurance, or, you know, something occurs that way that they're eligible at that time, but use the same standards across the board.
So once a year, re-up of enrollment, and then if there's nothing else, that kind of death or divorce, or marriage?
And I know that our earlier, I think consensus amongst the council members is that we were supportive of this, and that this last link was then the financial, what the financial potential cost might be. And am I sensing that there's not strong disagreement, that, so in other words, there's agreement that we would want to move forward with this, then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I want to thank Claudia for getting the information and answering our questions on this. That's very helpful.
I would also like to mention, remember, this was brought forward almost two years ago with Mickey Hart and the OU students to try putting this together, both in the domestic partner registry, as well as the benefits.
Right.
What held it off, again, was the finance side for us.
Right. And so I, yeah, thank, yeah, Mickey, who's now moved on to Columbus, and also Councilmember Gosney moved that legislation forward, so that kind of, it's laid the groundwork for this now to come into effect.
If I may, I mean, you already mentioned this, but, you know, also Ohio University, Greg Fialko's willingness to provide us with information, because they are becoming the template for putting this together, which is just another example of the communal responsibilities of the city and university.
Yes, thank you for adding that. Okay. Next item are some short-term notes that come due for payment, and some of you may recall that periodically, we have what's called our debt service and the due dates by which we are to make certain payments on loans. And so we have three of those coming up that we would like to begin legislation for. One of them is paying off the $500,000 for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And these were the energy efficiency improvements that were made, in part with the stimulus money. And we have been reimbursed the $362,000 of this. So with the $500,000 that we owe, there'll be a slight amount of interest that will be due with the final payment, so that will be $502,250. Second one that's coming over is $850,000 for the wastewater treatment plant again, and this bears on some of our discussion earlier this evening. This is the design and construction phase for the, for the improvements that we have, that we will be moving forward with.
Design only.
It's, oh, it's design only, not construction.
We should be that chief.
Maybe, design, oh, of construction, okay. Yeah, right. So that one is 500,00, oh, excuse me, 850,000.
Of which we're only really going to pretty much pay the interest, if I remember correctly, right?
Yeah, we're rolling over the entire note, actually. And so we need an, what will be as an appropriation of 853,825. Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor. The last one is the $400,000 for the fire truck. We borrowed on that, and once again, another example of collaboration with the university and them assisting us. But at this point, we're going to pay down $50,000, that's in actuality from OU, that's their support, $50,000 per year over the five-year course of this money owed. And then we will roll over the balance. So in order to do that, we need an appropriation for $401,800. And I think that covers it for the short-term note payments.
I believe so.
The next one is appropriations that will be needed, and there are several sorts of these. One of them is, is that we will be moving forward with an ordinance next week, and what it calls us to do is to reduce the 2012 year-end appropriations. And what this is, is these are the end-of-the-year technical corrections to the budgeting process, and it's primarily accounting for grants, this particular one does. And an example of this, I was talking with Deputy Auditor Hazlitt today, and he says, well, an easy way to think about this is, is we have the Oxbow repairs. We did receive a grant, and that was approved for that. We are doing some of the repairs this year, but... We are doing some of the repairs this year, but then the other part of that grant money needs to be reallocated for 2013. So we have to reduce the resources that we've certified at this point. And part of this is governed by Ohio Revised Code. We can't appropriate more money than we have, and we can't put it in our certified resources unless we are ready to be spending them. So, that's my explanation. I hope it's fairly accurate on those particular, that particular ordinance for reducing the year-end appropriations.
We do this almost every year, really. It gives the power for the auditor to actually, you know, take some of the stuff out of the loop that's not being used, or is not budgeted for this year, or not actually there as a certified resource.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We also have some other appropriations that were, as the end-of-the-year approaches, then, there are other, there are departments that operate within the city where they might have looked at supplies lines or had additional repairs, so we need to appropriate some additional money. And I have a list of that, but I want to make sure with Service Safety Director Mosley that I've got them all. But the ones that I received earlier today is that we will need an additional $1,000 for the recreation. These are mostly for the community center and the recreation department. $1,000 for gas will be needed for them. $2,000 for vehicle maintenance. $3,000 for bus tickets. $12,000 for electric at the Athens Community Center. And I had $10,000 for supplies, but am I understanding right, Paula, that they need, that you need that up at 15?
More like 15, and an additional five, just in the 200 series for Parks and Rec. And I'm not sure that includes the fact that his mower went down and he needs 1,700, but we'll have the tightened figures for you.
Yeah, he said he eliminated 2,001 account, but he need, the mower went down and he needs 1,700, so.
Lawnmower.
Lawnmower. I hope it's not one of our new ones.
Oh, no, there's one to the street to pass.
Oh, good. Okay, that's, that's...
Did you get Ray's last one today?
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
Is the park of, the community center just operating at a higher expense than they anticipate, or why all of a sudden?
They actually were reduced.
I shorted them a bit at the start of the year.
So, okay. So they, they were told, but if you shorted them, shouldn't they be kind of cutting back? I mean, I'm not understanding why all of a sudden...
Well, okay. Are we talking about community center, or are we talking about recreation? Which one?
Well, I guess...
Well, tonight, both.
Both.
Generally, the community center, that's not new to have to increase their appropriations. They have it in the unappropriated balance. The community center, as you know, took quite a hit this year, along with the Parks and Rec and the pool and what we've had. And we don't necessarily always make money on this kind of quality of life that we provide, so.
Yeah, and I agree with that, but it just seems that it's not, if they're cut back at the beginning of the year, that they can't always rely on having money put back into their budget.
Well, we operate a state-certified daycare there, and I do indeed still have to feed the children snacks and things, so there's a limit in terms of how I feel in terms of what we can tighten up and reduce. But we can get a year-to-year kind of look at that for you. I don't think that we're going to be exceeding last year's expenses, but we'll look at that.
I don't, I don't want them to think that they cut back at the beginning of the year that they're, because I'm concerned about what the state funding cuts next year, that we're going to even be closer to the bone, and that we're not going to have anything at the end of the year to get one.
Okay. If you look at some of the things that we're asking for, gas recreation, for instance, they want $1,000 on that. The gas and oil was 10,000, we budgeted, 10,500. They've pretty much gone through everything except for maybe, they've got about maybe $3,000 left, but they've been going through, so they've gone through most of it already. They just want to buffer on that. They couldn't, in theory, we can move it from transaction class 200s and 300s around, but they're real short on, they don't have a lot in the other fund lines.
Well, I'm not necessarily arguing each line, I'm just not understanding why all of a sudden there's this big...
I guess to clarify that, when I said that they were kind of short-funded this year, that was a mathematical error put into the budget. It didn't really align with previous year's expenses, so.
When I'm doing the budget for next year, for instance, what I'll be doing is I'll be looking at the September numbers probably, which will give me the three-quarter mark at that point. And I'll be saying, okay, so they're asking, you know, recreational come and say, "I want X amount of dollars for gasoline," and realize it went up, of course, that's a bad example in that sense. But I would be looking at, saying, okay, they want, let's say, $10,000. And I look at their budget and say, well, they had $10,000 last year, but they only spent $7,000.
Right. Because you're only looking at three-quarters of a year.
Well, no, but, you know, but, no, total. Let's say, let's say, you know, some percentage of it. Say, if I pull that out all the way to the end of the year, they have not spent at all of that $10,000 they requested last year, so why should I give them another $10,000 this year for 2013? That does not always, you know, calculate out, because, and as you see, what you're looking at here in terms of recreation, you've got gas funds and vehicle maintenance funds. These are both unknowns. If a vehicle goes down, what you planned for, what you didn't spend last year, and therefore it looks like I should lean you back a little bit.
Right. All ends up this year.
Yeah. So, these are back and forth. The bus tickets, the recreate, that's the community center, that's a reimbursement, pass-through. So we've been, we've been spending more money on buses, tickets all the time. Go Bus has been accelerating quite a bit. So when we put a budget saying, oh, we're going to spend this much to reimburse the ticket system here, back and forth, it's different. The electric, I couldn't tell you why we're up that high. Probably because of the heat, I guess. I know if I followed it from month to month, it's the summer months that pull the most power. As for supplies, if I'm looking at the supplies...
I will state that I made this recommendation for the increase after consulting with a deputy auditor who's looked at traditional expenses.
I'm just, I think that it just, in order to explain it to TV land especially.
Oh, okay.
Because, you know, we get questions on council.
Sure.
You know, how come we're always increasing things at the end of the year? I think it's a legitimate question, you know, but budgeting is a, you know, kind of approximate science here, so, thank you.
Well, one of the things you're seeing there is, again, I look at what's been spent, what we asked for, they asked for last year, what's been spent, you know, and what I estimate they will do. Also, the auditor comes up with next year's revenue, and realize, if I'm looking at a revenue that's lower than what the expenses are, I start pulling things out with the idea is that if it comes in better, then we've got it. But really, I can't be, I can't make a budget that's going to spend more than what the auditor, you know, Kathy Heck says we're going to take in any given time. I mean, we have a certain amount of carryover, but it's not good policy to be pulling out of that carryover. So therefore, you know, if you look at some of the lines and says, okay, we are going to make a million here, but, you know, Rich is asking for 1.2 million, I'm not going to give him the 1.2. I can't, you know, without saying, where's it going to come from? So I leaned back on it. The same thing, I think the fire chief has also talked about overtime issues of that nature. And almost all the budgets right now are looking at fuel. Most of them will be able to transfer some money from the other TC 200s and 300s. The ones that are going to need, the major ones, is actually water and sewer, but I'm going to leave it up to Andy and his department to say where that money comes from. In theory, we don't need appropriation, we just need to move it around.
Okay.
Probably more than you want to know.
And I did check with the deputy auditor today about the revenue projections, and he said things are looking, you know, okay between now and the end of the year, but I appreciate the comment, too, knowing that we have had a loss of, you know, local funds from the state government over the past year, and we're having to do with tight budgets. The other appropriation item, and once again, I hope I'm explaining this correctly, and this is for the Project 241 Circle Drive. So we have a $55,000 appropriation that is needed, and this is for the construction of the Circle Drive. We, we received an award, and Ohio Department of Transportation paid that fee, but the money, in order to meet with accounting standards, needs to come into the city and go back out. So that's the $55,000 appropriation. And quite frankly, I would want it credited to us anyway, because our departments have worked really hard to bring in the grant money. So that's what that $55,000 will be. The other item is that, and I'll talk about budgets, so this is timely. I think Kathy Heck shared with council members a budget timeline. She sent that to you in an email last week. And what's probably most critical is that we look, it's a detailed process of looking at revenue projections, the continuing expenditures and allocations, one-time expenditures. But what will happen is, is that we'll look at the timeline more in-depth by October 8. What we're looking towards then is the budget ordinance, the first reading of that on December 3, and special session for the second reading on December 10. And then we'll have third reading and final passage of that on December 17. So that's the timeline for right now. And we'll hear further, I'm sure, from folks. Miscellaneous items. Clerk of Council Debbie Walker shared with me, keeping us in line on ordinances that need to move forward, that continuing ordinance is needed for the sidewalk assessments. So the first one, ordinance that we were moving through last week, was having council accept the report of that Citizen Committee that make the recommendations. And now we need to proceed with the sidewalk, the ordinance that authorizes the proceeding with the sidewalk improvements. So we need that in place and on the books, so that it matches with the work that happens. And last but not least, for my listed items, is to draw your attention to the audit that you may have received last week in your box. And Auditor Heck isn't with us tonight, but she will share with us some other information from that. So if you get a chance to look through it and you've got any questions, then you can address them to Auditor Heck next week. I think what's most critical on this is to know that there, when you have an audit, if there are major problems, you have a finding. And the city of Athens has come through a number of years on their audits with no findings, and that's once again the case here. And I think it is a compliment to how the auditor's office works and the city administration works to keep things moving forward. They do have one recommendation on how we take care of parking meter receipts, which Auditor Heck described to me, is that they're putting some new measures in to correct that, you know, to address that recommendation that was made by the auditor. Any other items? Finance and personnel?
Moving on, City and Safety Services Committee Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item for this evening's agenda in City Service Safety Committee would be a renewed agreement with the university pertaining to our police department combined efforts or efforts to communicate and work collaboratively together. So in 2008, we passed an ordinance to authorize the City Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Ohio University for law enforcement and assistance. And this would be a renewed update on that. I believe, Paula, you have a few comments regarding that, correct?
The proposal that we've received from both police chiefs of Ohio University and our chief of Athens PD has wondered why it's limited to a four-year term, wondered if there'd be any consideration for making it a 10-year term. It's been in place, Jim, I don't know how long. And the only other change was make it a his/her, where it says his, kind of thing. But I do need this brought forward. My first reading, but since it expires October 24th.
Okay.
I wouldn't ask for a suspension, emergency, all that, at the second reading.
Do we need, does the ordinance read 10-year term?
He has, looking at the old one. I have the new one.
Okay. Gee, thanks.
The thing with a 10-year term versus a four-year term is that a lot of things can change in 10 years. So it seems that if it's kind of de facto, sitting down and saying, everything's fine, what do we need to update, why can't we keep it at four years?
I'm not saying we can't. This is something that we've wrapped into our MOU work group party, and there's just another formalization.
I just, 10 years seems really long. I mean, it could, the university can have 10,000 more students, or...
Yeah, and I would agree with Member Fall as well, because there's changes on city council, and changes in administration, changes in mayor. I think it's wise to keep it, I would agree with you, to keep it limited to the four years at the moment. That would be my request. I might be outvoted.
I think at the least it brings both parties together to make sure that we're thinking about it if there's some lapse in some point in the future.
Okay.
I just want to say, or go on the record for saying that I understand the intent behind saying 10 years. In my time with chairing J-PAC, since its inception, well, not since its inception, but since its charter meeting, is watching Ohio University Police Department and Athens Police Department working together at the extent that they have in dealing with the multi-house party issues and things like that, it's, I like the intent of saying that we're comfortable with 10 years. I see that they're comfortable with saying, let's have a 10-year agreement, so, just need to say that, make sure that's clear, because I think they're doing a great job in terms of working together.
Thank you.
So could the intent be it's a 10-year with a review every four or five? Or whatever? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, in 10 years, you can have a new police chief on both sides, and...
You absolutely could. You could, we could split this and say five years. Dr. McDavid's just got his...
Yeah, it's just...
It's an odd agreement, because actually, the president of the university and the Service Safety Director signed it, which is unusual. It's usually, if it's the president, it's the mayor. I oversee the police, so that's probably...
Are you a czar?
That's safety part.
She's a Zarina.
A Zarina.
Zarina.
Zarina? I'm just asking, if we need to suspend five years?
By the second reading.
Oh, at second reading?
I also had a question for you to ponder, and maybe if you had a minute or two to just offer us highlights of the benefit of an agreement from your perspective as the City Service Safety Director. Where have you seen this as beneficial, or how has it been helpful?
I can't imagine where I haven't seen it. We're engaged on a weekly basis, as Councilwoman Patterson stated. The Joint Patrol has been ongoing since, pretty much, I believe Chief Powers came here, where we have a city police officer and a high university police officer, and they travel to heavily populated student areas.
On shift together.
On shift together.
Yeah.
And that was really new. And any, we can call on them at any time, vice versa, if they have any emergent need on campus, that authorizes our police to go in there and assist. It may be as much as holding back traffic for a fire, a fire truck to come in, but we, you know, things happen on a daily basis.
They've been patrolling in the neighborhoods.
Pardon me?
The OU police have been patrolling in the neighborhoods.
Super.
And again, it codifies what needs to be done.
Correct.
Mutual assistance. I think Dr. McDavid said that they, that conversation we had last week, something about Columbus hadn't even put one of these things together with OU.
Right, first time.
So, we're ahead of the curve on that side of it.
But Columbus is just now starting this sort of engagement.
With Ohio State.
Because they had the, we're not stepping over the line.
Just crossing the street.
Yes. Exactly what he's saying.
I hate to nag, but we're going to introduce this as a five-year term? Is that what we're going to open?
I say six.
What do you want? I hear 10 over here, I hear four over here. Do I have five? Do I have five?
I think one minute runs out today. And so next week, we need to, as the Service Safety...
I'm sorry. It runs out next month, that's what, but I won't have the 30 days. I mean, if you look at this, when you introduced it in '08, we were up against the wall on that timing, too. That's why we're...
And we've got some time, okay?
But I would like to present it as the way that council would accept it, in terms of four or five years.
Okay. Again, I say, as a friendly suggestion, I just think we're bumping up one year.
But if it's at four years now, we are bumping up one year. I just, I'm uncomfortable. I mean, it's, you can term it as, you know, it's good for 10 years with a review at five, but I just think that so much, I mean, it could be that the police numbers just radically change within 10 years. I mean, look what's happened in the last 10 years here. So it just seems that to negotiate a memorandum, you know, on this sort of stuff where it's a relatively, you know, if it's been working really well, that's great, so having a check-in every four years or five years is a good thing, because it's not like renegotiating the whole thing.
Okay.
What is there a reason to change it to 10 years?
They just thought there didn't... They just thought there didn't seem a reason to have it renewed that rapidly. Every single Ohio University police officer is sworn in as a reserve police officer for the City of Athens. So, I would like to present this in a manner that you're all comfortable with. So we'll just stand with what it's been in existence for a number of years, and that'll be four-year renewal.
It works.
Okay.
Don't fix it.
I think the other benefit that I see as well, too, is that it's an opportunity for the next group of council members and mayor to become familiar with the process and to be aware of that agreement, and make them all mindful of what it entails. Because I didn't know anything about it until I had this opportunity to be sitting here at this spot, and I might not be sitting here four years from now, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else regarding this issue? Super. Okay, moving on to the next issue, and I will need some guidance from the City Service Safety Director on this. I have a note here that we need to discuss, the renewal of the purchase for chemicals and salt for the year 2013.
It's an annual ordinance that authorizes the bids that go out for the water softening and other chemicals used. Debbie, I cannot remember a dollar amount on these. I didn't know if you had an idea, if it's just rather general.
It's $293,000.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, we were looking at this budget position.
This is the same as last year.
Yeah.
Or this year.
To treat our water.
This doesn't, it's not salt for the roads.
No.
It's salt for the water softening system and other chemicals.
To make the water a little less hard than it already. Oh my gosh. If they didn't soften it, what would it be like?
Actually, most of the time, if you want, if you want to sit in one of the bids, they come with a, there's a bag of salt you get with the stuff, and they, Crystal sits there and shakes it, looks at it, too. So, not only do you have a bid package with a number of price, but you also get an example of the salt that you're going to receive.
Commodities trading.
And you can use it on your state.
Member Guyz, any other question or comment?
Yeah, so we see this every year, and it includes, it's the salt for the roads, the...
No, no, I'm sorry. It's just for the water treatment plant.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be seven...
But it is a generic chemical, so, yes.
And then my request, I called Member Butler up earlier today, was to separate out the water fluoridating chemical from the other chemicals that are part of this purchase, so that they could be voted on separately.
Is fluoridation chemical included in this purchase?
I believe it is. And once again, I guess we can present them separately, but we are under mandate by EPA for our system.
I guess I would have to question why, because are you setting the situation up for disapproval of the funding of the fluoride that puts us in violation of Ohio Revised Code? And that's totally a separate issue, as far as I'm concerned, and it's to come before the citizens if they want to vote on it. But I don't see that, I mean, I see that as a little different than, we have said we're stopping the discussion until it becomes an issue that we will look at for the citizens to vote on in a public venue, then.
I think, well, if you want, go ahead, Member Guyz, if you want to speak for yourself. I was going to attempt to interpret what...
You can jump in, sure.
Well, I think if I were to interpret Member Guyz's request, and that would be, if they were separated as different issues, then he could have the right to vote against the purchase of that as a council member, and that wouldn't deter the rest of the purchases that needed to take place for the city. Is that correct?
Why wouldn't you do that for each individual chemical?
I don't know.
Well, there's only one that's been publicly debated pretty hotly over the years, and so to separate them out would give those of us who might not think that, right now, that's a good idea to do, an opportunity to make that statement without voting against a good additive, what one would consider a good additive to the water, that's necessary to purify and clean the water. But I'm seeing a lot of no's here.
It seems like it's a, it just seems to be something that's very political, and that we're dealing with, with, you know, city and service and safety services, we've discussed this, they have it on, you know, they're going towards a, you know, referendum, and that when we start playing politics with our budgets, that leads to no good place. That's my personal opinion.
I agree.
Any other comments on this?
I had the same question as Member Fall did, as though, if you're going to parse one, why aren't you parsing all of them? I understand your reasoning, but...
And from my standpoint, it's a dangerous precedent to set when we are indeed mandated by the EPA to fluoridate our water, with even the possibility that this would not be approved. And then, we're talking about 2013, how do I treat my water? How would we meet that EPA mandate?
Some of us disagree with that being a mandate, based on the legislative history of Athens with regard to this issue in the state laws. But it's, this isn't the time to discuss that. Just want to make sure that the voice that says that, not all of us agree that we're mandated to abide by that. So, all right, I think we've had enough discussion.
Thank you. At this moment, too, if I could deviate just briefly from the agenda to allow Member Pappy to update us on the Keep America Beautiful affiliation that we discussed the last couple weeks. She has some information for the...
Right, so, thank you, Member Butler. So, last week, we approved a resolution, R 1112, and the wording was just a little off and not in keeping with the Keep America Beautiful people. So, this is the new wording, we've been informed. Keep Athens Clean and Beautiful, comma, a partner of Keep Southeastern Ohio Beautiful. In our resolution, we had put the word affiliate, and we cannot be an affiliate. We can be a partner. So, I'm...
Is that a grammatical error, so we don't necessarily have to re-vote on it, or we need to reintroduce the whole thing?
Or amendment? I don't know. Can we just...
Power of words.
An amend.
Was that called?
So, so next week at council, we can amend the resolution with those words.
Okay.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding that? Any pass participle's or hanging check?
Hanging check. I must be getting it right.
Okay. Moving on to a serious issue.
That is correct.
Earlier in the summer, Member Guyz and I had been approached by a community member who wanted to discuss concerns and issues regarding the welfare and issues pertaining to safety and air-water of the community. We obviously had a long summer break, the month of August, which slowed this process down. But this evening, we have a member of the community, Mr. Dick McGinn, who would like to discuss concerns and ideas and thoughts pertaining to these issues with air and water and safety and welfare of the community. So, sir, if you would like, you have the podium here at your disposal. And I do know that he sent an email out earlier in the week for council members. I believe the mayor also was CC'd on that discussion. And floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. It's a great privilege to, for a citizen to be able to address the city council, and I want to thank Mayor Wile and President Sands. And especially to thank Kent Butler for the invitation to come and speak tonight on this most important matter. The issue is titled, "A Community Bill of Rights for Athens Residents and Protecting Those Rights With a Ban on Fracking and Associated Activities." So that's the topic for tonight. And I would like to mention that Elise McMath deserves a lot of the credit and none of the blame for what I'm going to say. Science tells us that Planet Earth is threatened by global warming caused by human fossil fuel consumption. History tells us that fossil fuels are found in strategically important countries, which not, incidentally, have been battlefields, most recently in Iraq. Here in America, a civic battle is developing over fossil fuel extraction from deep underground using a new technology called horizontal hydraulic fracturing, or fracking. Both Democratic and Republican administrations have committed themselves to fracking into the Utica and Marcellus shale deposits that lie beneath our very feet. Local newspapers are telling us that fracking in our area will happen and is happening, and they are calling it an unstoppable force. But it must be stopped, at least here inside the City of Athens. Fracking poses a serious threat to the environment and to the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens. Now, we have a proposed ordinance. I don't know if there are copies available or not, but we can call it the Pittsburgh Model, or the rights-based approach to this kind of an ordinance. It's a response to a contemporary problem caused by collusion among corporations and federal and state governments, to deny sovereignty to local governments, and ultimately to the people, who depend on their elected officials to represent them and protect them from harm. The document is a response to a perceived imbalance, an imbalance in society that favors corporations over democracy. However, I do not feel that calling it an imbalance implies in any way that corporations are bad, or that democracy in the sense of the will of the majority is necessarily always in the right. Let me illustrate my point of view with an example. Our American way of life, embodied in our Constitution and Bill of Rights, would not uphold an ordinance prohibiting a legitimate business. If a man builds a shoe factory, then gets elected mayor, and gets a law passed prohibiting other shoe factories from building in Athens, that, such a prohibition would be illegal. It would violate the Commerce Clause of the U.S. Constitution. It would not matter that the community backed the ordinance by 100% vote. It would still be illegal. In this example, it is clear that democracy in the sense of the will of the majority in a community would be in the wrong. The Constitution protects the right of the competing shoe factory to do business in Athens. The proposal, then, that I'm talking about, is not about a shoe factory, but about quite a different order of business, namely fracking. Fracking poses a real and present danger to our health and safety. To continue on the level of illustration for just one more minute, consider a proposal to build a munitions factory within the Athens city limits. And just to juice up my example a little bit, suppose the munitions factory wanted to test its ordinance in a vacant lot right next to one of our elementary schools by exploding their bombs at all hours of the day and night. Probably such a factory might claim that the Constitution protects its right to conduct business in Athens, and that if the community tried to stop them, the factory could sue on the grounds that they were victims being deprived of their sacred liberties. As if. As if corporations were persons that even have sacred liberties. So we'll talk about, more about that later. The question then, before the city council that I'm bringing tonight, is how can our community, or any community, fight back against such arguments? The ordinance, then, offers a new and different way to fight back. It is not based on playing by the rules as established by federal and state legislatures. Those rules cast the corporations as victims. Instead, it is based on the principle of home rule, the right of the people to govern themselves and to protect their communities and the natural environment from harm. It asserts the sovereign right of the people through their local government to ban fracking because it is unsafe, and to declare null and void all federal and state laws and permits which would encourage and support fracking inside the City of Athens. It is important to emphasize the fact that this ordinance idea is rights-based. The Athens City Council has already passed a well-hit protection plan and a severance tax on fracking companies, but these were focused on regulating the industry. Other municipalities have done the same. These ordinance were non-binding legally, and when challenged in court, they tend to be overturned by judges. The fact is that current laws protect the company's rights to conduct business where they please. The ordinance before council tonight is different. It is not only a ban on fracking, it is also an assertion of sovereign rights. It was drafted with help and assistance from the rights-based movement started by a Pennsylvania-based group called Community Environment Legal Defense Fund, CELDF. Over 100 communities across the United States have adopted CELDF-drafted laws, including Pittsburgh. One especially worth watching is the court case developing in Mansfield, Ohio, at the present time. The following is a quotation from the CELDF website. "Rights-based ordinance is focused on a community's rights to local self-government, rights to clean water, rights of the community members over corporations. Most fracking bans that have been overturned by the courts are based on state regulatory laws. For this reason, when a corporation sues a local municipality, the laws are stacked on behalf of the corporations, and the legal battle focuses on the violations of a corporation's civil and constitutional rights. But with a rights-based ordinance, the legal battle would instead be focused on the community's democratic right to self-governance." Next, it is important to discuss the controversial nature of fracking. In this, I will draw on an article by Paul Hahn in Columbia Magazine titled, "The Gas Menagerie." Whenever anybody talks about fracking, there are always two different meanings that tend to get confused. It is important to consider both of them at one and the same time. One is fracking in the narrow sense, which the industry claims is safe. The other is fracking in the broad sense, which is clouded in secrecy and protected by special federal and state laws. Fracking in the narrow sense only takes a few days, while fracking in the broad sense takes months, or years, or even centuries of monitoring and cleanup. The difference is staggering. So let's first consider fracking in the narrow sense, the way the industry likes to talk about it. In the narrow sense, fracking is a well-stimulation technique, well-stimulation technique, in which millions of gallons of water, sand, and chemicals are injected at high pressure more than a mile underground to open fissures in shale rock and release trapped gas. Fracking in the narrow sense does not even include the payoff, which is one or two years of production, and then production falls sharply off, according to past history. Fracking in the narrow sense is a model of perfection. It is like a football coach's play outlined on the blackboard and memorized by the players. It is designed to score a touchdown every time. Fracking in the narrow sense is an abstraction, a model. And yes, of course, it is safe by definition. No one has ever been harmed by the model. The deception is that industry and federal government spokespeople, including President Obama's top EPA administrator, Lisa Jackson, have used the abstract model of fracking in the narrow sense to declare to all the world that fracking is safe, period. What we hear repeated over and over is Lisa Jackson's famous statement to Congress that she is not aware of any proven cases where fracking has affected water. Of course not. No operation taking only three days and thousands of feet underground can possibly affect groundwater. I have another name for fracking in the narrow sense. I call it fractus interruptus. It is like a two-rail movie, where the projector runs out of film in the middle. The audience is left waiting to see how it is going to end. The feeling is one of, well, frustration, until the whole story is revealed. The ordinance before the city council addresses fracking in both the narrow sense and the broad sense because they are inseparable in practice. It addresses the whole sequence from start to finish, including preparation, production, and cleanup. The whole sequence includes well-boring, well-casing, wastewater disposal, land-clearing for well-pads and pipelines, infrastructure-building, methane flaring, sand-mining, and heavy trucking. Trucking... Trucking deserves special mention in a small community. It means trucking millions of gallons of clean water and chemicals to the mine site, then trucking wastewater out of the mine and transporting it to an injection well, which then must be monitored forever to prevent the aquifer from coming into contact with toxic wastes potentially seeping up from underground during storms, floods, and earthquakes. This is fracking in the broad sense, and anyone who claims it is safe is lying. Documented fracking activities in Wyoming have caused headaches, nausea, sick livestock, contaminated well water, flaming faucets, neuropathy, tumors, and brain damage. But of course, the companies deny blame, and regulators appear ineffectual if not compromised. If I may be permitted to parody Lisa Jackson's famous quotation, I am not aware of any proven cases where fracking in the broad sense has failed to affect water. I next wish to turn the attention of council to the special problem of injection wells. Our state is richly endowed with empty spaces underground created by coal mining over the past 150 years. Some people with perhaps more imagination than common sense have determined there's money to be made from these so-called empty spaces. In August of 1983, Ohio legislators collaborated with Ronald Reagan's anti-environmentalist interior minister, James Watt, to rewrite Ohio law. Under Governor Rhodes, the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, was placed under the authority of the Ohio Division of Natural Resources, O D N R. This opened a path to the use of abandoned mineshafts as the not-so-happy dumping grounds for a quarter of the continent's excretions, all approved by O D N R, including hazardous and non-hazardous coal mine slurry, medical waste, and municipal garbage from surrounding states in Canada. Ohio is the only state in the region that sanctions the dumping of so much waste and to such a degree that Ohioans should be ashamed of it if they knew what was going on. With O D N R in charge, it is no surprise that Ohio's fracking laws are much weaker than other states, where EPA regulations do not allow them to dump fracking brine locally. But they can send it to Ohio, and the state picks up the checks from the industry. What is especially discouraging, as Athens City Council learned just two weeks ago on September 10th, is that local governments are not allowed to benefit by taxing the fracking companies, not even a severance tax where the funds would be used to monitor and regulate fracking companies operating inside the city. What, then, is the legal basis for the powerlessness of municipalities? Scientific American editorialized in 2005, "Congress at the Behest of Then-Vice President Dick Cheney, Former CEO of Gas Driller Halliburton, Exempted Fracking From Regulation Under the Safe Drinking Water Act." "Congress," says Scientific America, "needs to close this so-called Halliburton loophole." Accordingly, two bills to repeal the Halliburton loophole, H R 1084 and S 587, were introduced in Congress in 2009, but they have died without a vote for three straight years. Congressman Maurice Henchey, 22nd District, New York, wrote in the New York Times, in support of the bills, asking, "If hydraulic fracturing is as safe as the industry says it is, why should it fear regulation?" In a further semantic trick, the disposal sites for fracking mazes are called Class II injection wells by the EPA. Class II injection wells are intended to receive only brines and other fluids associated with gas and oil production. The deception is that fracking wastewater, called brine, meets all federal and state safety regulations. You heard me. The safety of the fracking brine has been deregulated and then declared safe on the legal ground that it meets regulatory requirements. The safety of fracking has been legislated, de jure, despite the overwhelming contrary testimonial evidence, de dicto, and scientific evidence, de facto. Ohio injection well sites, all 172,068 of them, are daily receiving toxic brine and unnamed chemicals which remain legally, safe, and secret, even after researchers test them and find hundreds of chemicals, including known or suspected carcinogens such as benzene, polylene, and xylene. Furthermore, toxic materials occurring naturally underground, such as radioactive radon, hydrogen sulfide, and hydroxylphoric acid, are also being dredged up by the wastewater also to find its way into the injection wells. According to Guido Stempel, writing in the Athens Messenger just last week, "The U.S. Geological Survey of Fracking Wastewater in Ohio Found Substantial Amounts of Radium." Thirty-seven of 52 samples they examined had more than 200 times the amount of radium that is permissible in drinking water. Stempel offered his estimation of why the industry might not want to disclose what is in the fracking brine. He writes, "Trade secret was the excuse, but now we know the answer: radioactivity." In conclusion, let me emphasize why I think the rights-based ordinance being considered, or I hope will be considered by city council, why this offers a fair chance of being successful in the long run. The rights-based approach does not appeal to laws based on semantic tricks and deregulated regulations. It sidesteps all of that. Instead, it appeals to the more fundamental right of the people to govern themselves. It pits the right of we, the people, against the rights of corporations. This approach offers the prospect of having a fair fight in the courts. The outcome we seek is for the courts to uphold the claim that a community's right to a safe environment is greater than a corporation's right to do business. And even if the courts should side with the corporations in the short term, there are serious proposals to amend the Constitution to overturn such judgments, essentially returning sovereignty to the people. It will be a long fight, but there is enough at stake to make it worth our time to make a start. There will be many small steps along the way. The Athens Bill of Rights is one such step. Next, it will come to the attention of the Athens County Board of Commissioners, who already have an action task force working on these issues. Further, it will be welcomed by citizen groups such as Athens County Fracking Action Network and by citizens in many towns and municipalities in our state and elsewhere who have been working tirelessly over the past two years to force the state and federal regulators to understand the real issues involved. This rights-based ordinance represents another approach, adding a vital tool in the fight to stop fracking before it does any more harm. I therefore urge Athens City Council to adopt an outright ban on fracking to protect the soil, the air, and the aquifer that supplies water to the people of Athens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGinn. Thank you for your time and effort to present that with this so eloquently tonight. If you have time, or if you are able, I want my fellow members of council to see if they have any questions or comments for you at this moment. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. I am also curious to hear from you, perhaps what, as a citizen of the community, what your wishes or hopes might be for this body to move forward? What would be something that you would like to see happen or occur?
I would like to see the city council pass an ordinance banning fracking on the grounds that it is violating, on the grounds that the city has the, the citizens and the council here has the right to pass such a ban. That's been the problem before, that the ban is passed, but they're, well, it's not binding, or state regulations will overturn it. What we need to say is that we have a right to protect our soil and air and water and our roads from these trucks and our wilderness from pipelines and the rest of it. We have a right to ban that if it's on the grounds that it's not safe. And there's plenty of scientific evidence that it's not safe. Most of the arguments that are, for the safety of fracking are based on this very limited narrow sense of fracking in the narrow sense, which really only takes three days, and it takes place 1,000 feet underground. Consequently, the claim that it's safe is just a trick. It's a, the story is not complete because we have to keep monitoring it. So, my hope is that the council would pass an ordinance banning fracking, and then consider, okay, what are the consequences of that? Possibly, since it's controversial, it would certainly have to be put to a vote somewhere. I would expect that if a ballot measure were put on the ballot for spring or fall, I can fairly well guarantee that there will be political activity in support of that. I will be standing personally at the farmer's market, collecting signatures, if that's what it takes, or promoting this idea.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, or anyone else? Member Naisley.
I just, I certainly appreciate the time that you both have spent preparing the information, and it certainly gives us something to think about. And I must, I did read your article earlier in the day, your presentation, and also, but would like to look further at the Mansfield ruling and also the Pittsburgh legislation, and also look at, you know, the talk of home rule. I'm not sure, you know, is Mansfield a charter city? What kind of restrictions there might be on this, or what kind of restrictions we might have as a statutory city? But certainly worth learning more about. So, I appreciate your educating us tonight.
Thank you, Member Naisley. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. McGinn. I appreciate your time and efforts.
Thank you.
I believe that is it, unless there's anything under miscellaneous from the mayor's office. We're good. Sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot that Member Patterson had something tonight as well.
Yeah, this is just an announcement, but it falls under miscellaneous, I believe, anyway. That the, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the J-PAC, Joint Police Advisory Council, is having a city safety tour. It is going to be October 4th. The bus, I believe, it's a 20-passenger bus or some van, something like that. Anyway, it's limited seating. It will be picking up people in front of the city building. It's Thursday evening. You do need RSVP, because there is limited seating, and you can RSVP to the Deputy Service Safety Director, Ron Lucas, if you wish to ride on the bus. The city service, the city safety tour, again, like I'd mentioned a couple weeks ago, is designed to go around in the evening and look at areas throughout the city that might warrant lighting or other safety features within the city itself. Everyone is, it's open to anyone who wants to ride. Again, just RSVP.
Did I miss the time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven.
Seven o'clock, October 4th, in front of the city building. RSVP.
Donuts?
The, both police chiefs will be riding on board. No, no donuts.
Pizza.
There will be a J-PAC meeting, so you'll be able to sit in on the J-PAC meeting. We'll be discussing other things going on as well.
Seven? You said seven, correct?
At seven o'clock, 7:00 P.M. Just make sure you RSVP. Service Safety Director, will you be on the bus as well?
I'm on the bus.
All right.
Who are we RSVP with?
Ron Lucas.
Thank you.
Driver, Ron.
If you are, if you do want to ride, one last thing, and you are going to RSVP that you're riding, you also might want to add any particular locations that you're interested in. I should throw this out as well, that the J-PAC website, anybody in the city can send in a street address or location that you think we should go to and look at, and we will do our best to drive and see what, you know, look at these different locations.
And with both police chiefs there, you should be safe.
And Ron Lucas behind the wheel.
Yeah.
We'll all be safe.
Okay. It's just a little before 10:00.
It is before 10:00, yes.
A little bit before 10:00, yeah. Somehow, I thought that said 9:46.
Okay.
We are finished for the evening. Thank you very much.